It now being seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is May 6th. And then we, it is 7:00 PM, we are meeting in the town meeting room. And would read the agenda if I can figure out where I put it. Okay, I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Gannon, I am the chairman. And we have before us approval of the agenda, approval of minutes of April 8th, the site walk, April 15th, site walk, April 15th, meeting, and April 24th, meeting. There is time for a public comment. Then we have two public hearings, one for Gary Martin, a site plan amendment, and one for Clearview Estates, a subdivision amendment. Once we're done with that, we will have pending business of Gary Martin for his site plan and Clearview Estates for their subdivision amendment. We have Skilling Woods subdivision amendment on there. And then we have new business Vinyl Pack LLC. When we're all done with that, we will go home.
I'd like to move that we approve it with, with one change. I like, if we could change the minutes to be at the end of the agenda, just keep people from waiting.
Make, make the motion and get someone to second it.
Well, that's my motion.
Okay, motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth, to move the minutes, the approval of the minutes to the end of the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. So we will start in public comments. Y'all weren't here when I started reading. So at any rate, public comment, there's a time in the meeting. It is, it is that time of the meeting when, if you have something that you want to know about the town ordinance or about how to do something within town, you can ask us as long as they're not on the agenda. If your comment has anything to do with an agenda item, I ask that you wait until the public hearing. Does anybody have any comments? Hearing none, we will move on. Public hearing. At 7:03. The first one is Gary Martin, a site plan amendment proposal to create a 40 by 40 addition to an existing 56 by 100 foot building and an additional 50 by 100 five base storage building. The parcel is located at 35 DMR Drive on Tax Map 1 Lot 1D in the BI District. Gem Holdings LLC is the property owner. Gary Martin is the applicant. James Logan of Longview Partners and LLC is the applicant's agent. Does anybody from the public have any questions? For Mr. Logan. Hearing none, since the board is not allowed to ask questions in a public hearing. I will close the public hearing at 7:04 and I will open the Clearview Estates subdivision amendment. The applicant proposes to modify the subdivision plan for Clearview Estates, section number three, which was approved by the planning board on April 1st, 1981. Specifically, the applicant looks to modify this plan by replacing the cul-de-sac located on Lot 1414 and identified as Laurel Loop on the plan with a road and hammerhead turnaround. He is seeking this amendment to resolve underlying issues regarding the location and construction of Laurel Loop caused by the subdivision's original developer and the lack of compliance with a consent agreement. Michael Thomas is the parcel owner and applicant. The parcel is located at 189 Clearview Drive on Tax Map 17 Lot 1414 in the R1 Zone. Does the public have any questions for Mr. Thomas and his app and his agent?
If you do, we have a problem.
Okay, hang on, yeah. Use that mic over there. Everybody should be able to hear then.
So my name is Peter Gillingham, 185 Maplewood Drive. About a year or so ago when this started and we were going into the issue of the cul-de-sac being on, in place in the wrong placement, I've brought up many times, as long as the rules are being followed and we have documented that, that should be rectified. I don't think this is the way to rectify it. I think this is step one in creating a development that has not been approved yet. Currently, we have a cul-de-sac that throughout this last year has been blocked, has been encouraged for people not to use it. But what is encouraged is the town to pay to plow it and sand it and in turn maintain it. This is an interesting solution where the developer is going to pay for the road, which is a benefit to the taxpayers of Arundel. But in the last year, it's basically the cul-de-sac has been off limits. At times it's off limit for school buses, at times it has cones in front of it. It's not a place our children, children in the neighborhood would feel comfortable riding their bikes, go for a walk. I go for runs, people go on runs in the neighborhood, they don't use it. So I would suggest a better solution. Rectify the land issue. Have the owner put a driveway into their house. Maintain some of the land as Town of Arundel. Then if the development is approved, then a road is put in, don't need the hammerhead, they go into their development plan. One shot, one road. Right now, what I think is being proposed is the whole have a development approved. The hammerhead is there as the part of it, the start of it. The development's not approved, I think what we have is a high-tech driveway to be plowed and sanded by the people of Arundel. A road that the public, people in the neighborhood probably won't feel comfortable using because of the track record of the last year. A year ago, I would have said this was a creative solution. I don't think it's a creative solution. I think it's a step forward in the development that hasn't been approved yet. The development had been approved, I'd be fine, fine with it. But I don't think we should take, put the cart before the horse, I don't think we should be taking that step, so.
Thank you.
Read for my phone so I stay on track. Uh, my name is, this one? Okay, uh, my name is Sarah Carrier and I live at 59 Clearview. Tonight I'm speaking because I'm deeply concerned about the proposed hammerhead turnaround on Laurel Circle and about why this project is being presented with a private developer offering to fund and manage modifications to our public infrastructure. First, the environmental impacts of this seemingly small change cannot be ignored. Right now, the cul-de-sac is open green space. It's grass, but the grass that serves an important environmental function. It absorbs rainwater naturally, reduces runoff and protects the soil from erosion. If we pay, pave it or modify it into a hammerhead, we replace what it, that natural absorption with hard surfaces that will increase storm water drain off. More runoff means greater soil erosion and a higher risk that sediment, oil and pollutants will flow into nearby drainage areas, wetlands and water systems. Additionally, the change could alter the way the water naturally drains into this area. If that happens, we could see localized flooding, including on nearby properties. And that leads me to a critical question, who is responsible for when things go wrong? If the hammerhead causes future problems like flooding of nearby houses, erosion, collapsing pavement or storm water failures, will Mr. Thomas be fixing it at his own cost? Or will the town ultimately, the taxpayers be stuck with the consequences? Once the private part, project is completed on public land or in peace his, the responsibility for repair, maintenance and liability typically shifts to the town. That means our community could be left paying for damages, managing environmental impacts that would result from a project we had really little say in. Second, even beyond the environmental risks, allowing a private developer to manage public road work is dangerous for another reason. It sets a very dangerous precedent. If we allow one private landowner to fund and control modifications to town infrastructure for personal gain, it opens the door for future developers to request the same, weakening the town's ability to protect the interests of its residents. Private funding sounds helpful now, but the construction almost always comes with hidden costs. Engineering fees, inspection, drainage collections, liability protections and environmental mitigation. And if something is missed or goes wrong, the taxpayers will be the one to have to step in then or five to 10 years from now. Therefore, this project, before this project is even considered, the town must require licensed bond and insured contractors, an independent, independent civil engineer hired by the town, even if it is paid for by somebody else, a full environmental impact review focusing on storm water flooding risks and habitat loss, a performance bond to guarantee proper construction and protect against future failures and an independent third-party inspection during construction. We, the residents of Clearview Estates, have the right to expect public roads and public lands to be managed by public authority, not by private developers seeking access for personal projects then and down the road. We have the right to expect that our neighborhood's character, our property values and the environment will be protected for future generations living in Arundel. I urge this board to place the long-term interests of the, of Clearview Estates and the Town of Arundel and to look at this issue as more than just a change of a shape of a road. Thank you.
Would you like to respond?
Oh, sure.
Because that, that, you do have that, right?
Yeah, so I, I, I think we can, you know, respond to the, the first two commenters. So the, the first one is really discussing a potential future application, which.
You know, like, like that one up there.
Let's go to the big mic.
So everybody.
Sorry.
Cameron Ferrante for Mr. Thomas. So with respect to the first comment, I mean, that's really all relating to a potential future application that's not before the board tonight. What's before the board is really just this proposal to replace the cul-de-sac with this hammerhead to make Mr. Thomas's property more contiguous and to resolve this lingering issue of the cul-de-sac's design and construction and the fact that right now the roadway is really built primarily on private property. It's not in the area in which it's supposed to be located. And right now, we're just looking to fix that while avoiding having Mr. Thomas's property shaped like a U and contain a cul-de-sac that really only serves one lot. With respect to the, the second comment regarding environmental impacts, the, if you, on the plan, it actually calculates the net impervious surface that's created by the proposal. And the hammerhead turnaround actually results in a net reduction in total impervious surface. Additionally, with respect to the drainage design elements and the concerns about future flooding in the plan, our provisions for, you know, drainage culverts along the road and a stone check dam that would assist with that, there's no overarching modification to the, to the drainage design and the storm water design for the actual subdivision as it was approved. So there shouldn't be any impacts with respect to flooding or anything else like that. As for, you know, the concern about private funding of what ultimately becomes municipal property, that's something that happens in virtually every subdivision. The goal is to develop the road, fund it, construct it, and then turn it over to the town for maintenance as a public road. And that's the reason why the subdivision standards and the street design standards all require specific construction elements and design elements that have to be incorporated into these roads so that the cost to the town in the long term is mitigated and there's no concern about, you know, getting a lemon out of a developer. And I believe the Public Works Director has submitted a letter to the planner and to the board indicating that it's their recommendation that there be a third party, an independent third-party engineer who would review the construction of the road as it's being performed. And we're happy to agree to that. We have no objection to that kind of oversight on the town just to ensure that the road is properly built and designed and built as it's shown on the plan. So I think that pretty much addresses most of the concerns so far.
Yep. Nope, have to wait, you have to get, get up to the mic.
Who would be paying the third-party mitigator to the overseer? Who's paying that? That independent third-party, okay.
It's my understanding that the town is going to, the town will be hiring it and Mr. Thomas will be paying the bill. Anybody else have any questions?
Question.
Okay.
As I've asked before, I've asked what gives the right to do this? And I asked beforehand, it was reviewed by our lawyer. And we have not seen anything from our lawyer as our guidelines, which I had requested. And I have not seen anything for this review here. At this point, I call this whole public hearing out of order. Because I've waited for information for a year. And then I asked for our last meeting, they have it, so we, the board, can see the instructions and there are no instructions.
The attorney's response to the questions that we asked a year ago was that they are a moot point because that application was pulled and has not gone forward. So we do not have anything from the attorney addressing the issues that were brought up a year ago.
So it's good thing. Even if it goes to the selectmen or anything else, or for us to prove something, we have no guidelines to approve this.
We have, we have the land use ordinance that says whether or not this, this has been done appropriately. And now we're going back to the public hearing. Anybody from the public that has a comment? Yes, sir, please stand up to the mic. I'm sorry, Diane, I didn't realize you were standing there.
Hopefully everybody can hear me. Why are we even here?
Your name, please.
Phil Tashrow, I'm a resident of Clearview. Why are we even here? This makes over 40 years ago. It goes back to basic law, offered acceptance. Mr. DuBois offered land for sale, we as neighbors bought. No guarantees, no warranties, we just purchased as is. Later, the town put it, Mr. DuBois put in a road. The town accepted that road as is. When we purchase our lots to build, we do the same thing. We bought in good faith. Why after 40 years is this an issue? As far as the neighbors are concerned, it's a public road and we all enjoyed it over the years. All of a sudden, Mr. Thomas wants to gain by it. If that's the case, let the golf course put a road in or let Mr. Peck, since he has land that's adjacent to Mr. Thomas, to put the road in. With that being said, all of us feel strongly that the cul-de-sac belongs to the town where we all enjoy it, residents and our guests. Thank you.
Diane?
I'm gonna try to keep history as close to what I believe happened. I sat here a little more than a year ago listening about discussion about a road. The problem was, you can't build that road off that cul-de-sac. That's what was said at that meeting. The way that cul-de-sac is designed, you cannot build a road off it. That's what was said. And that's when, oh, you can do a hammerhead. Well, the warranty deed for the original person who bought it from DuBois has mentioned in it that the, this lot is further conveyed, subject to certain stipulations to modification and consent agreement dated February 13th and recorded in the registry. This has already been recorded. There's a 60-foot wide easement, but I believe that was for the road because there's, everybody has the same language, about 30 feet, 30 feet, 30 feet, 30 feet. So that was in the York deed. It's also, I believe in Mr. Thomas's deed. There's also an exhibit. And I think this is the crux of what everybody is looking at. And that is that there is nothing in the exhibit of allowed uses within this development that would allow someone to come in and put a road through their property to build another subdivision. That's because subdivisions aren't meant to work that way. Now, unless I have to go back to school about subdivisions, because I've been to a lot of meetings about subdivisions. You design a subdivision. The subdivision is independent. They have their own lot sizes. Sometimes they have to equal what the town wants, other times there's, why should I say that? A give and take, where the lot sizes are certain sizes and then there's common land. But these lots all had very specific sizes. These lots and this plan, because I have been through every folder of Clearview that there is, including what's at the registry. There is nothing on any of those that shows any additional roads. But there's also nothing in this exhibit that gives anybody permission to put a road through their lot to go to anybody else. And I think those of you that sit on the planning board know that for fact because for the most part, unless you were approving section one or phase one of a subdivision or phase two of a subdivision, you wouldn't have a road built in there unless you needed it for utilities or unless it was already there. Because I have one through mine for telephone, CMP, whatever. So both the York lot, which was purchased from DuBois and then the York lot, which appears to have been purchased by Mr. Thomas, all have the same consent decree in it. This consent decree, we found one at book 7354, page 305. And it goes further because it has all the little diagrams of how the roads were supposed to be. Including the new survey that was done and the Clearview folders have individual pages for each lot that was affected with the measurements. So all of this has been registered with the register of deeds. So I have another meeting on Thursday, as everybody knows, because I want very specifics about what didn't, did, didn't get done. Because this stipulation to modification is signed by numerous people because it's got everything in it from the stipulation to modify a consent agreement to things from, I believe it's the DEP. Yep, Department Environmental Protections as to what lots couldn't, could, couldn't be built on. There's location, site location development from the DEP. There's certain lots that aren't supposed to be built on, period. So this was a whole packet of issues with this particular lot. It also has all the little individual markings. I believe the original ones with the stamp from the person who did the survey are in the DuBois file, because I took copies of them. So I'm a little dumbfounded, I guess. If the subdivision was approved with an exhibit of what you couldn't, couldn't do in that subdivision, including having any type of stockade fences within 75 feet of any line, having any accessory buildings other than X, Y and Z, which both seem to be non-compliance on this particular project. I know they said something about moving one of the buildings, um, but fence isn't supposed to be there either. Kind of gives me indications of how things have been going over there. This is not right. When we approve a subdivision, that subdivision has 50 million stipulations in it. Now, I'm not saying everything with DuBois goes right. I know, I own property abutting him. But the actual plan and what was on that plan and the acreage stipulations for those lots and the fact that we shouldn't be able to build a road through an already approved subdivision is a concern for me. Because that would mean that every single subdivision in town would now be able to have somebody come in with their lot and say, no, I'm gonna buy the land and back and I'm gonna bring a road through the subdivision. That kind of defeats the purpose of people buying a subdivision. Most of these subdivisions have very particular rules. This one has a whole page of rules. I've seen some, you couldn't even have a clothesline. But they have their own rules. The planning board at the time this was done had to have approved these rules. You had to have known these rules were in place. So why are we doing a hammerhead? Well, we're doing a hammerhead because he can't get a road in through the cul-de-sac. He can't get it in through the circle. That was already mentioned at one of the meetings, I'll go back and pull the minutes if I have to. And the planner said, oh, put a hammerhead. That still doesn't take into consideration, it wasn't meant to be there. And the subdivision wasn't meant to have this done to it and it's not fair to the neighbors. So I will take this back up with the selectmen. But I think this process of subdivisions where we put roads in them after the fact, we allow people to do things to them after the fact. We say that things aren't recorded when I very clearly have, I don't know how many pages, including the documents from every single piece of that road. Which is why I asked whether or not the road that is currently there, does it fulfill the stipulations of what is recorded in the registry of deeds? And I can't get an answer from anybody as to whether or not it does or doesn't. But this is what's recorded, this is what's supposed to be there. And if this is not recorded and it's not there, I don't know why they couldn't find it, it's plenty of pages. And I'm not that versed in real estate law. And I was able to find it, not in one place, but it's actually recorded in two separate places. There's a long version and a short version. So I don't know why people are saying it's not there. I don't like the fact that we are not telling people that we're putting a future road, that we're just changing this to put a hammerhead in. It seems almost deceitful to make the rest of the people believe that, no, we're not, we're doing this purposely because somebody wants gain. They don't want to pay for a road from the golf course to the back of the property. That's fine. But you can't do that in a subdivision. Subdivisions have very specific rules. You guys set those rules. And if those rules aren't working or if there's something wrong that this is happening because the rules have an issue, then I would suggest that you take a look at the rules as well as look at this project. Thank you.
Cameron Ferrante again. So just to respond to a couple of the issues that were raised, I think it's, I think there's really two points there. One is a question about, you know, right title and interest. And then the other is a question about deed restrictions and deed covenants and how those are enforced and what their relevance is here. So for the, for the purposes of the board's review, right title and interest is really just a, a on-the-face examination of the deed. right title and interest is really just a, a on-the-face examination of the deed and the deed's been provided. It indicates that Mr. Thomas owns the property. And there's nothing within it that clearly prohibits this proposed conveyance and development of the hammerhead. So from the planning board's point of view, uh, I don't think it would be proper to, to dig deeper into any potential deed covenants or anything like that and make what is ultimately a, a legal determination as to the competing rights of Mr. Thomas and any of the other, uh, owners within the Clearview Estates subdivision. And that, that bleeds into the next point about, you know, the rules that, what was characterized as rules, which are really just private deed covenants that are attached to most of the deeds within Clearview Estates. But ultimately, those aren't enforced by the planning board. Those aren't approved by the planning board as part of the subdivision approval and review process. Those are things that the actual subdivider, Mr. DuBois, puts in to those deeds as he conveys them to property owners. And to the extent someone believes that any of those covenants or restrictions are being violated, that's a civil matter between those two property owners that has to be taken and dealt with in a court, not by the planning board itself. And I think that's a, a similar issue to what Mr. Kane raised previously about the, the prior, uh, application that was made to the planning board and how that process needed to be dealt with. And the, the town attorney's response was ultimately that, you know, that's a, that's a private civil matter that the town doesn't really need to be involved in and isn't properly part of the planning board's review. So I just wanted to, to clarify that I think that those are the, the really two issues that are before the board. But I think with respect to the right title and interest aspect, you know, we provided the deed. There's nothing on it that outright prohibits the creation of a new road. And as I think anyone who's read deeds before, uh, can attest, you know, deeds don't say everything you're allowed to do on the property. They might say something that you're not allowed to do on the property. And on Mr. Thomas's deed, there's nothing that says you can't build a road. So that's my response to that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? To Mr. Franti?
Yes, you can.
Oh, Mr. Franti? Oh, Mr. Franti? When you were talking before where you were asking them not to look too deeply into all the deeds, was that a, because there might be people out here who might have things going on in their property? And so you didn't want anyone to look too deep into things? Because they might uncover other things that people have in the neighborhood? Is that what you were asking the, or asking the planning board when you said, don't dig too deep?
Okay. No, so I'm not suggesting anything like that, that the way it works is based on, you know, the case law and how this process is supposed to work, the planning board is in a court. So they don't have the ability to adjudicate private property rights and say whether you're using your property in violation of the law or whether someone's, you know, breaching a, a deed restriction or something like that. What they are supposed to do is look at the information that's presented to them and say, this person owns the property or has some legal right to the property, which appears to give them the authority to use it in this way. If you or another member of the public believe that that's actually in violation of a deed restriction or, you know, an HOA document or something else, or a condo declaration, that's a matter for civil litigation where you can then come forward and say, I think you've breached these. You shouldn't be allowed to do this and try to stop you from building or doing whatever the planning board is authorized. But there's a, there's a disparity there between what the planning board's responsibilities are as sort of a quasi judicial administrative body and what's properly within the purview of the courts. So it's not a latent threat or anything. It's just a clarification of the board's relative responsibility here.
So if it goes to the planning board allows this action to happen, would it be our thing instead of suing Mr. Thomas? It would be us suing the planning board for allowing this to happen?
I would say that answer is no, it would not be the planning board. It is a civil issue between the HOA in Clearview and Mr. Thomas. You would have to take Mr. Thomas to court.
So it wouldn't be the planning board allowing these things?
You can, you can appeal whatever decision that we make.
Okay.
And, and there, there are, we have a Board of Appeals. If you don't like what the Board of Appeals says, you can go to Superior Court. I'm never going to tell anybody they don't have a right to go to court, and I'm not even a lawyer.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Okay. Currently today, the Loop and Clearview is all town road, correct? So if this is all town road and nothing else has happened, and a year ago I sat in a selectman's meeting, probably more than a year ago, where they were told to come back with suggestions to fix it. They waited a year. But what I don't understand is why the planning board needs to approve it. You can't, they, he can't build a road off a town road. He can't touch the town road. So if he can't touch the town road, then why are we doing anything with this until it does become something other than a town road? Or unless somebody decides that they want to do this exchange, the hammerhead for the Loop? Which doesn't make any sense to me. I drive a small bus. And there's no reason why a small bus can't go around that cul-de-sac. But I will tell you, with a bus with kids in it, you don't want to be backing up into a hammerhead. I don't want to be backing up into a hammerhead. It's not fun. And you don't want to do it with a bunch of kids. You don't want to do it in the winter when you can't see over the snowbankings. It's just not a smart thing to do. My biggest, my biggest thing is I don't want to get into this big giant, well, this one did this one, this one, this one, this one. My biggest fear is you're going to approve this tonight, because that's, that's the way it's looked along all the other meetings. You're going to approve this. We can go to town meeting, not approve this, but then we still have a subdivision that's approved with no road. That's my beef.
Diane, this is not a subdivision issue. We are being asked to amend the subdivision to allow Mr. Thomas to change the road because there's an agreement that was never codified, if I understand correctly. There was an agreement by the developer to transfer some land to the town in exchange for something else. I'm not really sure what, but it was never,
And it's here with the registry.
I don't care if you have something from the registry, quite honestly. It's not our job to go looking for that. Our job is to look at the ordinance and say, what does the ordinance say? And in this case, if the ordinance says Mr. Thomas has to do A, B, C, D, and E, and he does all five of those items, based on the ordinance, we don't have a choice. We will approve his application.
Then why doesn't A, B, C, and D in regards to the road and the cul-de-sac and the hammerhead? Why does that have to, why is that not a requirement that it be resolved before you approve the subdivision?
Because we're not doing anything with a subdivision. We are looking at an amendment that will allow the selectmen to enter into an agreement to cure, I'm not sure cure is the right word, but to cure the consent decree that never got enacted. It was, they entered into it and nothing ever happened. And that's what this is trying to, to resolve.
Right. And now I've been to at least two meetings. And I can't get anybody to explain in regular plain English what didn't get done. Because clearly I can pull it off in the Registry of Deeds, but they say it doesn't exist. They say it didn't get done. So if it didn't get done, how did it end up in the registry not once but twice? With maps?
Diane DuBois, um, I, I don't know if I can answer everything here, but I'll do my best. You say that you have a consent decree. I, I don't know if there is a consenting, I don't, no, we don't know if there is a consent decree, a signed approved consent decree for the, the actual condition that was there. Okay. And if there is, I don't know why town council hasn't presented it to us. But in either case, whether there's a consent decree or not, it is my understanding that anybody can come to a planning board and ask to make a change to a subdivision. I think that's what these folks are doing. That, that's, anybody has their legal right. His song, um, all the subdivisions that are in town. If somebody wants to come in and make a change to that subdivision, there's a process to follow that. And these folks are following that process. I'm not saying I agree. I'm not saying I disagree with what they're doing. Alls I'm saying is there is a process, and I believe that they're following that process. Consent decree or not, they're asking to make a change to that subdivision and they're following the process. But that's the only thing that I can offer that, that I know. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening. My name is Tristan Everett. I live at 22 Maplewood Drive. Saw a lot of you out at the sidewalk survey. Uh, my house is the abutting house, uh, where this planned new hammerhead road will directly butt right on, to the property line at the minimum requirement. Um, I'm new to the town, but I'm not new to Maine. Both my wife and I are grown, both born and raised in Maine. Um, I just joined the military and Uncle Sam got to decide where I had to live for the past two decades. Um, so I have a couple of concerns that I'd like to bring up. When looking, doing some research on the planning board, and one of the documents I looked at was a recommendation from the town planner, but dated in October 10th, 2023. And it talks about, uh, my property, which was formerly the Budarazzi's property. Um, and it talks about, uh, they would suggest maintaining or even expanding the buffer to protect a budding property. And after each amendment, you can see that the road has moved more, nor, and more north. So the original one was by, you know, 30 feet in, and now it's right at the bare minimums for the right of way right onto the property line. And I asked that, I think it's within the board's discretion to require a increase in the buffer because that road significantly impacts my property. And I bought my property in good faith. My deed has a consent agreement and I bought it as is without expecting any changes. My second issue, and she brought it up too, was stormwater mitigation. Um, I have a couple of pictures from last spring. And I'm glad to show you guys these. But you can kind of look. And, uh, this is my property. Here's the other, uh, Mr. Thomas property. And then this area right here is where they want to play the road. They can see significant standing water issues from the spring of last year. And I don't think the plans adequately address the mitigating that water issues. Obviously, they did soil testings and all that stuff. Um, but if you do testings outside of mud season in Maine, you can get different results than what happens during mud season. And I asked the board to seriously consider the, the issues with mitigation of stormwater. And I can present this if you guys want. I know you probably can't see from there. Can I bring it up to you guys to look at the pictures or no? Do the pictures make sense? Or I can explain? Yeah, they, absolutely. Yeah. You guys can have the copy. That's fine. And what my air concerns with the stormwater, uh, mitigation issues. If we don't do it now, we don't do it right. I know that years ago, the town spent a lot of money fixing the issues with the front of our property on Maplewood Drive, redeveloping, redoing the ditching, uh, improving the drainage there. So I have significant concerns that if we don't correctly mitigate this now, that when this gets accepted as a town road, then will I have to come back here and complain about the significant increase in water on my property? Because I'm not a civil engineer, but roads are cupped to disperse water. And it's a lot different than undeveloped land, which helps prevent erosion and stuff like that. So I have serious concerns, uh, with the stormwater mitigation. And also the original application was for a road that was like 30, 40 feet to the south. And now we're looking at a road, you know, right against my property line. And I don't think that has been accurately mitigated. My last, um, issue I'd like to highlight is a interruption of school bus transportation. I've heard a lot of things like, hey, why does the bus need to go in the cul-de-sac? And I can easily explain it. My son is autistic, so he rides a special education bus. Um, he's required to have driveway to driveway pickup and drop off for his safety. So currently, the cul-de-sac is a safe and efficient way to get a bus to turn around as it was built in the subdivision originally. And I have serious concerns, whether it's during the deconstruction of the road for this process, there's going to be interruptions. Because if you see, when you guys came through to get to the cul-de-sac, you get the stop sign in Maplewood, and you drive up, my driveway's there, Mr. Moore's driveway is there, and then there's real, real safe turnaround from that point. So if the road gets deconstructed, then you're asking a special education bus to back up to a stop sign? How do they turn around? But finally, what, even when it's completed, like Diane mentioned, she was a school bus driver. I'm not, I'm just a pilot. I don't know. But ultimately, like you are asking a special education bus to do a three-point turn every day, twice a day? I have significant concerns, and I know that the RSU Transportation Department hasn't been contacted about this issue. And as long as the bus driver as well, I've only mentioned it to the bus driver. So I have those serious concerns that I'd like you to consider, and I'll answer any questions if I didn't explain it thoroughly. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Anybody else with any comments? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at 7:49. The next item on the agenda is Gary Martin. Site plan amendment, a proposal to create a 40 by 40 addition to an existing 56 by 100 foot building and an additional 50 by 100 five base storage building. The parcel is located at 35 DMR Drive, tax map 1 Lot 1D in the BI District. Jem Holdings LLC is the property owner. Gary Martin is the applicant. And James Logan of Longview Partners LLC is the applicant's agent. Has anything changed?
Not a thing.
I think you, the last time we met, you said this is going to be cold storage for the most part?
It is entirely cold storage.
Entirely cold storage. Okay. I know you were making me envious. You were talking about people who could afford to store their cars indoors while they went to Europe.
Or motorhomes or big boats, if you have one. Gary has a place. I mean, soon he may have a place.
If I had one, I wouldn't be in Maine in the wintertime. Okay. Does the board have any questions? We need to, we, we need to, a motion to approve because we've already deemed it complete and we've had the public hearing.
I will make the motion that we approve with these following conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. Findings of fact and conclusions of law. Background, the applicant is proposing to expand their existing self-storage facility located at 35 DMR Drive, tax map 1 Lot 1D. The proposal includes the, the addition of a new 50 by 100 foot commercial cold storage building commercial cold storage building and a forty-by-forty addition to the southernmost existing building. The new building will be utilized for cold storage connected to the existing electrical supply but will not require any water or sewer needs. The project will utilize the existing driveway for access and the existing parking. The board held a sidewalk for the application on April first and deemed the application complete at the April fifteenth planning board meeting. Findings of fact, the applicant is Gary E. Martin. The owner is the same as the applicant, the location is thirty-five DMR Drive. It is in the Business Office Park Industrial BI Zone. The existing land use is commercial and the proposed land use is commercial. The acreage is six thousand nine hundred and fifty-five square feet out of two-point-seven-eight acres. The planning board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in section ten point six point four in the land use ordinance as follows. The proposed project will conform to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. The application is for a proposed cold storage building in addition to the existing storage building. The relevant submission requirements to the project, such as lighting, fire protection, stormwater management, erosion control, and traffic impacts have been submitted by the applicant as part of the submission package and meet the standards of the town ordinance. Number two, the proposed project has or has not received all applicable federal and state permits. The application does not include any state or federal permits. As noted in the stormwater comments memo from Walsh Engineering Associates, an updated DEP permit for the project is not required. The proposed project will not, does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The proposed building will be accessed off DMR Drive. There are no additional driveways or accessways proposed. The applicant has provided details for smoke detector placement, and the building is compliant with fire codes and standards. The fire chief reviewed the proposed application in a letter dated April first, two thousand twenty-five, and has no additional needs. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The development does not require a groundwater study as the project does not impact groundwater flow. The proposed project will cause no adverse impacts to water quality or groundwater resources. Number five, the project will, will provide adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties.